Checking one, two. Checking one, two.
Thank you, Sam. We can both see video and hear audio?
Okay, great. Now, this is on the Pixel phone.
Okay, and that's what you're gonna use outside?
Yeah, that's what I'll use outside and I have two mics. So we can put those on whomever.
Yeah, so I did ask back there are not going to be speakers outside, so we don't expect that we'll need to pin mics on anyone.
Okay. All right. The echo is just because I'm in the room. Okey doke. Well, it worked. We're good.
Thank you.
Hi.
Morning.
Can you have just a split second?
Hi.
Do you have a split second?
Yeah. Let me see if I have...
Industrial or...
First line now.
No.
Okay.
Hold that. Oh. I don't know if I can quite say the word. I... I think it was... It was something like... I don't know. All right. All right. Oh, that before. Oh, it seems to be in here. Okay, I thought it was in there. All right, well then that works. There'll be about... Okay, so let me... I just want to make sure I'm... I think first thing I want to do is... Okay, so basically... And now, um... Yeah. And are they... I don't know. Okay, but... Okay.
Right.
I gotta do my stretches. Okay. All right, we're at the top of page. Work. Good. That would be one of the ones. One of the ones. Yes. Quite. Could be getting any picking up. Thanks for your help. Look at that. That's a thing I tend to... I saw a demo of that wide art. That is one of the... Before I came to U A D and how... And you realize that... Really... Truly... I... Do it some... Seems to be different. I heard it's more... More in the Midwest than East. I don't know if it's... So... Rural county? I don't know. There's a... Western... Rome... That's why you have the U A D. Yeah. Yeah. Well, first... Yeah, the sky yours. I'm starting to... So, the sky yours. But what I've seen is that... They try... They're reactive. So, they... And they're... And now... And... And that... Is that all? Yeah. This is...
Oh, we're watching what?
It's a weird like documentary. They want some Jacks, they want some Arches. Not anymore. If I'm on the chair, yes, but I have seen myself get in the way of the chair by saying something because I see something, but I should just wait till somebody asks, then I figure it's honest. If they want me on there, I'm happy to be on there, but...
Is it mine? Do I have a shit?
Shit.
If not?
Would you prefer that I log it more?
So, I just wanna be here.
I will, I'll be on and ready.
You're the backup. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our May twentieth, twenty twenty-five Regular Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we're gonna start off with a moment of silence. We're gonna start out, I think we have two and two, and then I have one as well, so if you wanna start out, go, by all means, go ahead.
Thank you. This morning, first, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Terry Sanderson. Terry Williams Sanderson, sixty-three, passed away in March in Utah. Terry married Tina Stenit on June twelfth, nineteen eighty-two, and together, they shared over four decades together. Within those decades, his two daughters, Haley and Elizabeth, were born, and he loved being their father, coach, and protector. Terry spent the majority of his career working as a technician for Lake County Vector Control. While his primary job was to spray for mosquitoes, he also maintained the vehicle fleet, designed and built various structures, including a dock and a garage for the district, and basically did what needed to be done to keep the district running smoothly. He also enjoyed coaching his girls in soccer and softball, and had recently gotten into RC crawling. He got to spend his final years of his life living with his grandchildren in Utah, and he cherished the connection they shared. Second, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for retired Sheriff James Wright. Retired Lake County Sheriff James Wright passed away on May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Sheriff Wright dedicated nearly thirty years of distinguished service to the Lake County Sheriff's Office and our community. He began his career in nineteen sixty-four as a reserve officer and rose through the ranks to patrol sergeant, juvenile officer, and ultimately sheriff-coroner in nineteen ninety. Throughout his career, Sheriff Wright was a passionate advocate for youth engagement and community programs. He launched the Explorer and Bicycle Donation Programs, both of which continue to leave a lasting impact. Even in retirement, Sheriff Wright remained deeply involved in serving Lake County, volunteering with the Office of Emergency Services and advisory committees focused on community well-being. Sheriff Wright's commitment, compassion, and leadership touched countless lives.
We said our farewells to two remarkable individuals, Brian and Rochelle Beeson, on Sunday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the Potter Valley Cemetery. Their contributions to the ranching, agriculture, and rodeo communities were profound. Brian Russell Beeson was born January twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-seven, in Hillsburg, California. He was a true cowboy who dedicated his life to the ranching communities. He was known for his exceptional skills in gathering cattle, training horses, and making exceptional working cowdogs. Brian's love for the cowboy lifestyle was evident in everything he did. He passed away on May first, twenty twenty-five, in an accident while doing what he loved most: out checking the cows. Rochelle, his wife, Rochelle Ray Bentley, or Bettenelli Beeson, affectionately known as Rocky, was born on July nineteenth, nineteen sixty-six. She met Brian while up here at the Lake County Fair, right here in Lakeport, and they married on July thirtieth, nineteen eighty-eight. She shared Brian's passion for ranching, and while making their home in the Potter Valley, they raised three children, Blair, Raylene, and Chance. Rochelle passed away unexpectedly on May eleventh, twenty twenty-five, just ten days after Brian. Many of us believe that she passed away of a broken heart. Both Brian and Rochelle were celebrated for their hard work, honesty, and dedicated dedication to the cowboy code. They embodied the spirit of the ranching community, and their legacy will live on through their children for many years. Their lives, many lives, they touched. They truly were a remarkable couple, and their absence will be felt deeply in the Potter Valley and beyond.
All right. Can I have one, one more? I have a moment of silence for Paul Higdon. He worked in our Special Districts Department. I would like to offer a moment of silence to observe the untimely passing of Paul Higdon. Paul served as an electrical, mechanical technician for Lake County Special Districts for five years. He was just shy of thirty-five years old and leaves behind his beloved family, including three young children. Paul's colleagues appreciated he always had a smile or nice things to say. He was crafty, he was crafty as well, once making a rose out of wood scraps and metal. His coworkers and management appreciated Paul's willingness to jump into any task and his hunger to understand new concepts. His family and community and the County of Lake family did not get enough time His family and community and the County of Lake family did not get enough time with Paul Higdon. He will be missed. Vice Chair Rasmussen, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. None? Not hearing any. We'll move on to the next item. Approval of consent agenda. As you may know, consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. However, anybody from the Board of Supervisors or anyone from the public can pull one of these items for further discussion at a later time. Is there anyone on the board that would like to pull a consent agenda item?
I would like to question something.
On the consent agenda?
Oh, no, never mind.
Okay. Anybody from the public that would like to pull something from the consent agenda item? Or from the consent agenda, sorry. Anyone on Zoom? No hands on Zoom. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0. All right. Next, we have our timed items. First is 6.1, our public input items. If you have anyone from the public would like to come and talk about something that's not on the agenda, please come forward. You will have three minutes to speak about your concern. Just know that we will not be able to respond at this time, and so we'll go on from there. If there's anyone that would like to come up and say something on a consent agenda, come on up.
Hi, I'm Mike Nudow, back for a third time on the Lucerne Castle. I just wanted to report that I got an email yesterday from Supervisor Crandall, and he has agreed to research the matter and check with county council, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much. I did want to mention, the only reason I'm here today is that, and I think some people think that this is a private real estate matter, and it doesn't belong before the supervisors, and I just want to say that I think this is perfect for the supervisors. You know, I made an analogy to like if you go to a restaurant and the environmental health says, hey, you know, we want you to pay $400,000 to do some testing, you know, or if I go to stay at a hotel and the tax collector says, okay, we're going to charge you $400,000 as a TOT tax, I think we'd all say, that's ridiculous, something needs to be done about that. And I see there's a difference. You may think that's a ridiculous analogy, and if you view it in terms of the fact that, you know, if you go to a motel or get food, it's a couple hundred dollars, whereas if you're doing real estate and development, you know, talking hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars or tens of millions of dollars, so $400,000 doesn't seem like such a big deal. The way I'm looking at this is that there's no reason for me to be paying, or anyone who's buying this castle, to be paying $400,000. It may be that I'm wrong, and that there is justification, but I've been trying since January 29th, when I had the pre-op meeting, and the supervisor at Special Districts sat there and said, you guys are going to have to pay $400,000. I said, I'm not understanding why that is. This is existing sewer system. It's already connected. Why, where does that come from? And I've been trying ever since to get an answer, and I haven't gotten that answer. So to me, I think of it as, all of a sudden, some county agency saying, you have to pay $400,000. That, you know, that's no different than if I had gone to a hotel or a restaurant or whatever. Why are you asking for $400,000? So I just don't, in case I'm being seen as a pain in the behind, I apologize, but I just think this is for the Board of Supervisors. So, and that's it. Thank you.
I think she answered an email to you as well, so I know.
Oh, I didn't see from her.
No, I mean, it was before, so just reminding you, because you said she didn't contact you.
No, she's answered, but I've asked for where's the justification to do the charge, and she's never given that. She points to things that don't answer that question. And I also had arranged with a, she told me to get a civil engineer in the sewer. I did, and I tried to get a three-way call, and she's never responded to that as well.
Thank you. All right. Any other public input?
No.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our next item. Bed of the Week.
Hi. So I'm Officer Rea with Lake County Animal Care and Control. This is Mr. or AKA Tank. He is a six-month-old Catahoula hound mix. He's our best guess. I like to call him Lake County Specials because they can be mixed with anything and everything. He's up for adoption at our local shelter, obviously, and he's been with us for about two months. And he has a sibling that's housed with him in the kennel. So if you guys are interested in adopting, come on down to Animal Control. All right, thank you, guys.
Made a smile today.
All right. Next, we will start on our 6.3 presentation of proclamation designating the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Vice Chair Rasmussen will be reading this proclamation.
Is there anybody here for this proclamation?
Of course.
We have our sheriff, who is in charge of our Marine Patrol.
A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of Lake County, designate the week of May 17th through 23, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving information for recreational boaters, so that they can have a safer, more enjoyable experience out on the water throughout the year. And whereas in the calendar year of 2024, the U.S. Coast Guard reported 564 fatalities in recreational boating accidents, which is a decrease of 11.3% from the previous year. 377 of these fatalities were due to drowning, and 319 of these boaters were not wearing a life jacket. And whereas the U.S. Coast Guard statistics show that drowning was the reported cause of death in three out of every four recreational boating fatalities, and that 87% of those who drowned were not wearing life jackets. And whereas Lake County Flotella has continued to provide free life jackets to youngsters by participating in community activities which promote child safety and educating the boating public in safe boating practices. And whereas Flotella 0808 of Lake County will continue its efforts to educate the boating public by resuming safety patrols, free life jacket safety checks, and to encourage boaters to practice safe boating habits and to wear life jackets. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County, and urges all users of Clear Lake, Lake Pelsbury Blue Lakes, and Indian Valley Reservoir to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when boating and exercising safe boating practices and boating responsibility. Passed and adopted this 20th day of May, 2025, and signed by our Chair, E.J. Crandall.
I just also wanted to thank our Sheriff's Office, who runs our Marine Patrol, and I know in addition to the Coast Guard Excellery, they do a lot of safety and public outreach, and they're out there on the lake 365 days a year, maintaining safety for our public. So that's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Sheriff, would you like to say anything?
I'd like to thank the board for bringing the proclamation and helping us with this. I think education is the most important thing. We have a lot of bodies of water in Lake County, a huge lake. We've had a lot of tragic events, and the more we can do to make sure that people are boating safely, the more we can prevent tragic events from happening on our lake. So appreciate all the support from the board. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
I think it's important to have safety on our lake, not only for the individuals themselves. It's a tragedy if somebody dies from being swept up in the waves or falling out of a boat, or a boat having a bad situation of sinking, or whatever the case might be. I know I've seen folks at Red Bud where their boat went down, and they were able to make it to the shore, but not all people are able to do that. There's times where we have white caps out there, and there's a current, especially if the dam is open as well. And so I think that for the safety of the individuals, and also for one bad thing happens that reverberates and potentially impacts the amount of people that want to recreate in our lake as well. And so I think having these proclamations and the work that your Marine Patrol does is critical to making sure that people continue to use our lake in a safe way. So thank you.
It's wonderful to be able to let you guys know how much we appreciate you, being out there and keeping our waterways safe and keeping our visitors and our public safe. So thank you for what you're doing.
Just considering the catfish derby this weekend, you know, lots of white caps, you mentioned it, and big catfish. So you've got to make sure you're safe, so the catfish don't pull you in, right?
[laughing]
All right. Anyone from the public? All right. All right. We'll bring it back to the board. Take our picture. as Foster Parent Appreciation Day. Supervisor Pisca will be reading this proclamation, and if you're here for it, please come up.
All right. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating May 31st, 2025, as Foster Parent Appreciation Day. Whereas children are key to our community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and have a right to thrive, learn, and grow in a safe and loving environment. And whereas foster parents, including kinship caregivers, provide the love, safety, and stability that children need in order to overcome past traumatic experiences, to reach their full potential. And whereas Lake County foster parents are caring for and nurturing more than 89 children and youth in foster care today, and helping birth families heal and prosper, so children can be safely reunified. And whereas, Lake County foster parents help children transition from foster care to permanent homes through adoption or guardianship. And whereas, we must come together as a community to recognize the important role foster parents play in caring for children who have experienced abuse and neglect, supporting family reunification and building strong communities. And whereas, there is always a need for more foster parents in order to ensure children, especially older youth. Children with complex needs and siblings have a safe, stable home in their community. And whereas, there are numerous individuals, nonprofit organizations, and public servants who are dedicated to raising awareness about the needs of children and youth in foster care. And whereas, through partnerships with families, child welfare staff, and public and private agencies, there is a collaborative effort to ensure that children are supported and successful. And whereas, Lake County joins the nation in specifically recognizing May 31st, 2025, as National Foster Family Appreciation Day, in honor of the foster parents who act as true champions for the children in their care and are helping to ensure their brightest possible futures. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors does hereby designate May 31st, 2025, as Foster Parent Appreciation Day, passed and adopted this 20th day of May, 2025, signed by our Chair of the Board of Supervisors, E.J. Crandall.
Thank you. I'm Sherri De La Torre. I'm the Program Manager over the Resource Family Approval Unit, and we certify the foster parents in Lake County. And I really appreciate the board taking the time to adopt this proclamation today. We at the county can never find time or way to adequately appreciate and thank our foster parents for all that they do. And so thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Rachel Dillman Parsons, Social Services Director. Thank you, board, for giving us an opportunity to recognize our foster parents and express our heartfelt gratitude for them. Foster parents provide a safe and nurturing environment for children in our care, and it is awe-inspiring. It's not just a job. It is a commitment to making a difference in the lives of vulnerable children. And foster parents embrace that with an open heart and open homes. Their willingness to share their lives, time, and love with children who may have not had those opportunities is something we're extremely grateful for, and they have a profound impact on children's lives, helping to heal past traumas, and help those children grow into confident, resilient individuals. And if anyone out there listening is interested in becoming a foster parent, please reach out to us. We are always looking for more safe homes to support our children. Thank you, foster parents, for your selfless sacrifice in being champions of hope for the children in your care.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, just want to shout out to all the folks that are committed to be in foster parents for our youth in this county, and I appreciate the work of Social Service Department in that area. Thank you.
So this is an annual proclamation, and every year, this reminds me of our past colleague, Tina Scott. Also, to add to that list, I remember our prior Clear Lake Police Chief, Chief White, was also adding more foster youth to his family. And there are just certain individuals that have taken on a large task to helping what could possibly be the most vulnerable in our population. Typically, when we look at vulnerability, it's a loss of a social network. It's a loss of support. And I think that identifies those specific individuals in the foster care system pretty deeply. So very appreciative of those that are standout, and appreciative of all of the others just taking on the role of trying to help out the most vulnerable. So thank you so much. And thank you for your services as well, and making sure that they get the services they need.
I want to thank you for all that you're doing for the kids, and I appreciate what you're getting the families out there to help with them. Thank you.
Ditto. But I do think it's just, you know, it's very special that, you know, families will do this, the foster parents, because there's some kids that come from a really, really harsh life trauma, and so they have to work through those, you know, those symptoms of that. And it's just wonderful to see them come out of it and become, you know, in a position to start, you know, aspiring to their dreams. So it takes a lot of work, you know, in between. I know it says 18 years, then they grow up and go to college, but in the meantime, that amount of trauma takes a lot more energy. You know, we think about time, but energy is, it's like a different wavelength, because you have to deal with emotions. You have to deal with trying to ensure that they're not triggered by specific things, the children. So it just, it takes a lot, and it's very special that families do this, so.
Well, I'm just going to have to brag then, because my sister opened her family to a set of siblings and adopted them, and they've been in our family for well over a decade. And this last week, my niece graduated from LCOE Certified Nursing Program, and my nephew is working for CalFire at Boggs Hell Attack. And the two of them would not have the present and the future before them had my sister not taken them in as children at seven and eight-year-olds. And Helen knows
And Helen knows them real well, too.
I do.
So, life-changing. And that's just a story of the impact that foster families have on our youth in Lake County.
All right, so I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to comment. I'll bring it back to the board. And we will take a picture.
I want to get this one right now. I want to get Bruno in here a little bit better. Thank you so much.
All right. All right, so next on our agenda is 6.5, Consideration for Hearing on Account and Proposed Assessment of Abatement Costs, 250 Lake Street, Nice, APN Number 035375-25. Property Owner Pamela Han. And we have Community Development Director Maria Turner and Code Enforcement Manager Marcus Beltramo. And I think we got to present, then swear in, or swear in, then present?
Mr. Chair, it would be swearing in of witnesses first.
All right.
All right. If you're here to provide testimony on this hearing and you're in Zoom, please raise your hand. Let me look. No hands in Zoom. All right, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Lake County Code Enforcement Division. We come before the board here today to request approval of a lien related to an abatement that we performed for 250 Lake Street. One issue I do need to correct is the memo does reference that the 250 Lake Street address is in Nice, California. Correction, that is Clear Lake Oaks, California. Please. All right. So, that being said, we'll move forward with the hearing and account and provide the evidence and give you all the information that you need to make your decision. 250 Lake Street, this is in Clear Lake Oaks proper. It is a densely populated area. We did receive numerous complaints about this property, either through the online complaint system or through complaints through the neighborhood or just complaints made through the community towards the Code Enforcement Division. The property owner has indicated by county records as a Pamela J. Han. The zoning for the property is an R1. The property is improved with two structures. There's a front structure and a back structure. Both of them are dwelling units. There is a default date. I'd also just like to add that this property is part of the upcoming tax lien sale conducted by the Tax Collector's Office. So, if the board does approve this lien here today, my first act will be to communicate and transmit this information to the Tax Assessor's Office, I'm sorry, Tax Collector's Office, to make sure that our lien is captured as part of the upcoming tax lien sale. So, from, between January 24, 2024 and September 2024, we took pictures of and documented the violations occurring on the property. From the photo here, what you see is a trailer full of trash. Trash is not permitted or allowed to accumulate on a property. Also, there's miscellaneous rubbish, trash, and items stored in open view that were also in violation of the county code. Storage issues have to be screened from public viewing just for education purposes. Trash is a health and a safety issue for our communities. Just different photos, you could see it's just everyday household trash and garbage items, miscellaneous items, tires, extension cords. The extension cords, I don't believe were plugged in at the time. If they were, that would be another violation, but that's not part of our action that we took here. Here's a kind of a photo out from the behind, on the photo on the right, you can see bags of piles of trash and miscellaneous garbage behind the vehicle there as well. So, any trash that accumulates on a trailer is a violation of the Lake County Code. So, we issued a notice of nuisance and an order to abate along with a notice of violation. We cited a condition dangers to human life detrimental to public health or safety, the existence of garbage and rubbish, unsightly appearance which is visible from a public right-of-way or neighboring properties or provides harborage for rats or other vermin or creates other health hazards or potential public nuisance. We also cited violations of the California Health and Safety Code, any nuisance that endangers the health or welfare of the public or occupants, and then accumulation of garbage or constitutes a safety or health hazard. The notice did provide for 30 days for the property owner to correct the violations, and it did provide a 21-day appeal period, which no appeal was received. Through, as things developed, as the investigation developed and as information was discovered, we determined the property did not have sufficient running water to the fixtures, so we did issue a red tag. The property, to my understanding, is still tagged for, to not be occupied. It needs running water to be occupied, so that'll have to be turned on before the, any occupants can occupy the dwellings there. We did obtain a warrant, an inspection and abatement warrant. We moved forward with the abatement. The costs, we used 360 junk removal and hauling. The cost of the abatement was $800. Admin costs amounted to about $294.54 for a total lien amount of $1,094.54. So, we're asking the board to approve our lien in the amount of $1,094.54. And after, if approval is granted, we will then take that information and transmit it over to, it won't go on to the auditor's role, it'll go directly to the tax collector and be, so therefore it can be captured if the property is sold or there's a tax lien sale. If not, we would go through our normal processes and make sure the information's transmitted to the auditor's office so that they can make that part of their direct charges or a special assessment on the tax rolls. That concludes my presentation. Open to any questions from the board. And if you need any specific information, Code Officer Michael Harrington Shaw here. He handled the investigation. He's here to answer any questions that I might not be able to answer.
Did you at any time make contact with the residents?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay.
With the resident Pamela, who is a property owner. I contacted her. I told me the people staying in the house were squatters who weren't supposed to be there. However, they were also her family members. So, after talking to her for a long period of time, that's when I decided to move forward with the abatement because she didn't have the means to remove the garbage herself. During the abatement, I discovered that the property had no water. After the abatement, we discovered the floors are very soft and actually have multiple holes in them now. So, that's why the red tag was placed. I stayed in contact with Pamela throughout the whole thing, and she understands the process.
Okay, good. I had noticed that there was different cars and boats there at different times.
Yes, ma'am.
One of them was unregistered.
Yes, there's been multiple vehicles there throughout this process, and that's typically what we see where these kind of houses, a lot of people kind of cycle through who's living there or who's staying there.
Okay.
And I'd just like to add, not having your vehicle properly registered is not a violation of the Lake County Code. If it's inoperable, wrecked, or dismantled, that would be the violation. If it's abandoned, we use the registration as circumstantial evidence to prove that the vehicle's been abandoned.
Yeah. No, it just looked like it had a flat tire.
Oh, flat, a flat tire, technically, we could.
Yeah, and that was fine. I just noticed different, that there was absolute activity with the boat to be in there, the two different vehicles. So, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Sorry, unorganized. Just two questions. One is for Code Enforcement. I guess it's more of a comment. I'm concerned about the lien.
Okay.
The tax sale starts in 10 days. It's going to take some time to get the lien on the books. This is going to hit the new property owner who purchases through a, potentially purchases through a tax auction, who then finds themselves with a new lien, not necessarily of their doing, but obviously you did the work. And so I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what the right path forward is. Because I've seen the situations where property owners say, "I thought I was free and clean. I paid all of the back taxes, I paid all the back liens, and suddenly something showed up because of the timing." And just concerned that in 10 days, that's not going to be able to be done without, and they're going to receive a property that is not free and clean.
So, I did, I've been in communication with the Tax Collector's Office. I talked to Patrick Sullivan and some of his employees, his staff down there. We should be in a good spot here. They wanted to make sure that this was done before May 29. The information is, if the board approves it, is immediately transmitted over so that that lien will be captured and the tax lien sale. When the tax lien sales, the proceeds, you know, the buyer makes the offer that they make. The proceeds are used to cover the lien. So, it really would go to, in the case, in a normal case, it would go to the seller minus the lien amount. So, in this case, the buyer really shouldn't incur a lien on this property when they buy it. It should be, for the most part, free and clear, and they shouldn't have to deal with that lien. The lien should be extinguished through the tax lien sale process, is my understanding. So, I don't think that should be an issue, to my understanding.
Okay. If it can be done within 10 days to be on there for the May 30, that works for me. I just wanted to make sure.
Now, the Tax Collector's Office was very adamant in making me aware of this, to make sure that we do it and get in there in a timely manner, so.
Okay. And then, I don't think it's a problem, but I do want to check in with County Council. I know it was mentioned that it said Nice, and I just hadn't really thought about it. It says Nice within the actual headline. Does that mean, is there an issue with it being incorrect in the header in the sense that maybe folks from Clear Lake Oaks weren't aware and that that wasn't appropriately posted? I know all of the filings for the notifications and everything looks correct. It does say Nice on the headline, and it does say Clear Lake itself in the memo, but everything else relates to Clear Lake Oaks. Just wanted to check in and make sure that.
Yes, so that should be fine. Essentially, the error in the subject line of the memo is a typographical error that is now being remedied and fixed. The notices that went out that are required to be sent out pursuant to the Lake County Code does refer to the correct address. So, that takes care of that from the property owner's side of things. But yes.
That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Which I don't think there is because nobody swore in. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action. It's in my district, so if someone can.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the lien in the amount of $1,094.54 and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. After recordation, the lien shall be delivered to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as a special assessment.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Go to, let's see, 7.2. Do you have another one on, I don't think you do on, I mean, later, but I mean, on non-timed. I thought maybe, no, we're good. Okay, we'll start out with 7.2 then. Consideration of the addition of special meeting for Tuesday, July 29, 2025, to the board's annual meeting calendar. And so, from what I understand, it's looking as if we're going to go ahead and schedule another meeting. And I don't know if you care to elaborate here, ACAU?
The request for the extra meeting is related to some upcoming projects that are timely.
Okay.
And they won't be ready in an earlier meeting.
Any questions from the board? Open it up to the public if there's any comments or concerns about having another meeting. All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve the addition of special meeting for Tuesday, July 29, 2025, to the board's annual meeting calendar.
I second that.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Let's see, which one shall we do? Okay, 7.3. Consideration of the Agreement Between County of Lake and S.Y. Psychiatry LLC to Perform Substance Use Disorder Treatment Medical Director Responsibilities on Behalf of Lake County Behavioral Health Services in the Amount of $350,000 for Fiscal Year 2025 and 2026. Director Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board. I want to start out by confirming that this is a required element of our Drug Medicale Organized Delivery System Plan and also a significant reduction for this service compared to last year. Last year, we didn't fully, you don't know until you know the full scope of a body of work sometimes until you get into it. So, we realize what our needs are. And it is also important to note that the majority of these services are reimbursed to us with Dr. Singh receiving 65% of our fee-for-service medicale rate, which is our standardized pass-through across all contracted providers. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Just to reiterate what was stated, I know that I had concerns about the big-ticket number from last year's contract with Dr. Singh. Obviously, very mandatory, necessary services being provided to support behavioral health's work. But the decrease from what was concerning last year, which was approximately 1.8 million to $350,000, is a very welcome decrease. So, appreciate seeing the contract as is.
Any other comments? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Hearing done, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and S.Y. Just wanted, I thought I was going to be corrected. I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and S.Y. Psychiatry LLC to perform substance use disorder treatment medical director responsibilities on behalf of Lake County Behavioral Health Services in the amount of $350,000 for fiscal year 25, 26. And allow the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries 500. Let's see, 7.4. Consideration of Approval of Temporary Variance of Ambulance Ordinance 2687 to Extend Permits to December 31, 2024. Director Arden is here, and I see, you all can come up.
He was in save.
Yeah.
He was hoping it would be quicker than that.
Don't say that.
Jinx it.
I'm teasing.
Good morning, board. As you know, we're here to ask for the variance for the ambulance permitting. Last year, we, during EMCC, were working on the new revised ambulance ordinance. Plus, with some change of staffing, we fell a little behind. There was also a catch by legal counsel that we were operating on fiscal year, and we're supposed to be operating on a calendar year. So, therefore, we're asking for this variance so that we can go ahead and start issuing permits for the next two years.
All right. Do you have anything to add? Questions from the board? All right, I will open it up to the public for any comments or questions. Did I say the public or did I say the board? I thought I said public. All right, no one on Zoom? I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Give me a chance, I'll find a question in there. Are we extending all permits or are there some permits that are not being extended?
It's all permits.
Every single one?
All ambulance permits in our county, yes.
Just wanted to check in, see if there were any changes.
All right. So, ready for action?
Yes, and I think we just offer the ordinance? Or do we have to motion? Oh, yeah, sorry. I will quiet, I'll be quiet.
So, it's essentially utilizing the current ordinance, the section of the current ordinance. So, it would be by motion.
With that, I'll move to approve temporary variance of ambulance ordinance number 2687 to extend permits to December 31, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries 500, thank you very much. All right. Let's see, we'll go ahead and do 7.5. Consideration of A, waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. B, approval of agreement with American Financial Credit Services Incorporated for collection of unsecured delinquent property tax, authorizing the treasure tax collector to sign. And we have treasure tax collector Patrick Sullivan here.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item today. So this is a proposed agreement for the collection of unsecured property tax debt. At this point, uh, there's many other counties that are using this type of service. It is considered to be a best practice. So we have a delinquency rate of about 15% on unsecured property tax. So this is an opportunity to try to grab some of that revenue, make sure that we're addressing businesses that are not paying their bills, um, getting everyone on an equal footing. I'm happy to explain anything about the contract or how the process would work. This is the first time the county would be using this type of service. Um, it's similar to what we already use in our office for court ordered debt for probation and other criminal cases. We work the case first ourselves in our office. After certain benchmarks are met, if we're unsuccessful in collections, then it will go to outside collections. The difference this time is that we do have a backlog. Um, unsecured debt has not been a priority for the office for a while. And given our current staffing situation, uh, especially we have recent developments where two staff members are gonna be out on leave, that's gonna put us effectively at a 30% vacancy next month. So I don't believe we have any ability in-house to work this backlog. I think we have the ability to work it going forward, but I don't think we have the ability to go into the past. So our plan is to provide the unsecured list to this vendor who will then pursue collections in the same manner they have in other counties. So any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I, you know, I read through it, I could not find what percentage we're paying them.
So the county is not actually paying a fee on this. It's structured like a lot of other outside collections programs. There's a fee that's being added on, but that would be to the delinquent taxpayer, so.
So we don't lose any income?
We don't lose any income, the county would still be receiving the full amount. But if someone goes delinquent, that is the, that's where the vendor is essentially making their money is that there's a 25% fee added on to it that the vendor is then gonna collect along with what's owed to us.
Okay, I didn't find that, thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, yes, just a quick question, sorry. Uh, what is potentially the unsecured amount uh, total?
So the current delinquent unsecured role, what we have previously uncollected is about 6.8 million. What I would really hedge on with that though is that, that is, there's been no discharges from that list. There are businesses in there that have long closed. There are businesses um, where there's other creditors that would be in front of us. So the odds of us recovering any of those assets or money are, are low. So the further back in time we go, the less likely it is to collect these. So we're gonna have to work with the vendor and um, come up with some sort of plan about how we're gonna prioritize and what we're gonna look at. And at some point, I expect a lot of that debt to be uncollectible. There's about $300,000 a year that goes uncollected and unsecured right now. So I think the other hope is that if we're more timely about pursuing it, we'll be more likely to recover.
So we just had a um, somewhat similar conversation uh, with the auditor controller about uh, some findings where fire districts, uh, cities, special districts and others need to kinda repay some, a clawback of sorts where money was provided, but money needs to be taken back. Um, is there a plan, I, once, once we send it out into the collections, let's just say one of our businesses gets hit and they get hit hard with tens of thousands of dollars or something. Uh, is there a possible plan on how to not make that really, really hurt? And, and allow for a flexible way to resolve this issue since we haven't really been doing our part on an annual basis? But suddenly we might be asking for five years of payback of things that maybe they, who knows, were, were unknowns to them that they was owed and just kept doing business uh, as if last year this was the way it was. So this year, this is how I'm budgeting. Is there going to be some flexibility once it's in the hands of AFCS? Uh, or is it just strong collections and we're done and whatever hurts, hurts?
We actually have more flexibility with this program than we have in other areas. Um, a lot of times with court ordered debt, for instance, once we take certain steps for a bank levy, uh, to seize accounts or garnish wages, we can't just dial it back easily. With this vendor, um, we do have quite a bit of discretion and we can indicate how far we wanna go, whether we wanna place liens on property, whether we wanna go after a bank account. Um, one of the things that I do wanna do is I wanna look at some of the higher value cases and not necessarily just immediately refer them out, um, so that we, we get a closer look at those. But I would say most of these folks, they should have been receiving notices every year. They should be aware of what's out there. Um, there would be an opportunity for a payment plan. Uh, we have a great deal of discretion with unsecured. That was the problem with secured property tax was that we have no, we're very limited discretion in what we can do. It's very much set by state law in this area, we have significant discretion.
And I appreciate that, and I guess what I would say is please utilize that discretion. Times are hard for many of us and if uh, we don't have to hit somebody as hard if it's possible to extend that. Uh, so if possible, looking for consensus to please utilize that discretion.
Uh, I would say I don't agree with that because once you engage with a collector, you might get a response, but you're paying them to do that work, to um, get them back into compliance and pay their bills. So, I mean, these people have been receiving bills for years and years and years and just not paying them. We're engaging this firm to do this work. We shouldn't have them do the work and then not allow them to get paid for it.
They're not getting paid, they're adding fees.
That's how they get paid, though.
But we're not paying them.
They are getting paid to do that work, they should be able to collect the fees.
Vice Chair, you were next.
How far, how many years back does that 6 million go?
So there are debts in here that go back to the beginning of the megabyte system, which would be around 2002 or 2003. So because there's never been any kind of discharge here, I mean, it's my firm belief that a, a majority of this debt is uncollectible. But because it has not been worked before, we really don't know what, what is collectible out there. Generally, um, anything less than 10 years old is what's considered viable um, because you can still place liens in a, like a normal effective way. Anything over 10 is very difficult, expensive and time consuming to pursue. So, that, I mean, that's something that's going to be up to us and the collections agency to evaluate. But at this time, it, we, we would anticipate authorizing payment plans. So our goal would be for everyone to get on a payment plan. That's, that's our hope.
Or to pay upfront.
Thank you.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I believe that you had mentioned that in some cases, they have not received notices in the past for monies due. I, I believe that you had made that statement. So I'm kind of of the mind of being flexible as well with them. And I know that in your contracts, you did mention for, that the company will be flexible and set up payment plans. And the big thing I can see is times have been hard over the last few years, especially with COVID. And uh, some, some grace may be needed to keep some of these businesses in bus, in business under those circumstances that, for what they have went through over the last decade, um, the hard times, um, the economy. So I would think keeping these businesses in operational would be our first priority if possible.
If I could respond a priori, yes, we, we can be flexible to, uh, in a sense with payment plans, but there is also um, a downside, especially for more recent debts. There's interest and penalties that accumulate the longer someone stretches it out. So, well, while, I mean, we're, we're very intentionally not coming after people hard on this, we, we would have the ability to immediately seize equipment, seize bank accounts. I mean, we're, we're really trying our best to avoid doing anything like that and do payment plans. But I, I do just wanna highlight that there is a danger in people stretching these payments out too long. It's gonna increase what they owe in the end. So I think we want people to, I mean, a dream, they pay it off immediately, save themselves a ton of money. If they can't, um, we wanna be flexible, but also if we, the longer they stretch it out, um, the more penalties accumulate. So it's kind of a balance.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to comment on this uh, agenda item. All right, I'll bring it back to the board if there's any further discussion.
I mean, I, I've worked with um, collection agencies before and people just don't pay their bill. They keep getting the bill, they get the bill, they get the bill, they don't pay it. You engage with a collector, they're more aggressive and then suddenly they wanna pay their bill. So we need to make sure that that collector is able to get the fees so that their time is covered. Otherwise, why are we bringing them on?
I am not looking for flexibility to decrease anything, just flexibility for, like we've been discussing, potential payment plans, which that's their choice if they get added interest or not. Uh, but they should be paid. If, if something is due, something is due, it should be paid, it shouldn't be wiped off. Um, but we also didn't do our part for a very long time uh, to follow up. And so I think that uh, flexibility in hard times is, is okay, as long as we're not cutting it, the bill.
Redbeck?
I would just add that while we are trying to offer flexibility, really none of those options are coming off the table. Um, we, we have discretion to a point, but at some point, if someone's not working with us.
Of course.
We still have to go after the whatever assets and um, funding we, we can. So we, we can give people um, quite a bit of leeway in, in terms of giving time to get back to us, time to set up an arrangement. But at some point, we also aren't allowed to ignore the fact that we can recover from someone if, um, if they aren't cooperating.
Thank you for explaining that. To me, that, that gives me the impression that you're, you have an opportunity to give some leeway. So for me, that I'm fine with as is. So, but uh, all good discussion, and so I'm just looking for action from here.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I'll move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. Can I do both or should that be separate?
Oh, we have to do one, all right.
It can be done separately.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And B, I'll move to approve the agreement with American Financial Credit Services Incorporated for collection of unsecured delinquent property tax, authorizing the treasure tax collector to sign.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and take a five-minute break, um, and then come back in, for uh, the eighth, item eight, uh, sitting as the Board of Equalization and do some assessment appeal hearings. Um, so I'll see you in five minutes. All right. I'm ready, Sam.
What number will we on?
Eight, or 10:00 AM. And we'll be sitting as the Board of Equalization Assessment Appeal Hearings, and we'll start with 8.1. Consideration of Withdraw for the Following Assessment Appeal Applications. A, Number 012024 Lower Lake Holdings, and B, 112024 Shaw Investments, and C, 1224, 2024 Bellig, and D, 142024 Lake Shore Drive, and E, 162024 DeVita, and F, Number 132024 Lisa Shannon, and G, Number 172024 Maldonado. And we have Dave here, Dave Schwanger, and Linda, all right.
I'm Dave Schwanger, the Assistant Assessor. I gave just a quick thing of notes. We did talk to everybody on the agenda, so everyone responded that they were intending to follow through on their assessment appeals, in which case we work with them. These were ones where we're explaining what the situation was and getting more detailed for them, and they all withdrew, so.
So County Council, they.
Yes, so just as a preliminary matter, your board may want to take and swear in any witnesses who may need to testify, even under this item number four, a withdrawal.
All right, if you're here in Zoom, raise your hand in Zoom if you're here for assessment appeals. And I'm not seeing any hands. So everybody else with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that formality. All right. So you did explain, and then you said you talked to everybody, and then we have a couple documents in front of us.
Correct, and the second document I just included, we always refer to the property tax rules, so I just gave you an index of what they are. And that's what we have to follow, and the board has to follow for the assessment appeals. You know, the first rule is just very basic. These are the rules, and they're governed by the assessor and the Assessment Appeals Board and all division of property tax. And then all the rules are basic on how we do the valuations.
All right. Anything else to add? No, all right. So I'll, any questions from the board about it? And when we're discussing all A through G, all in one, okay. And so if there's nothing, I'll open it up. If there's anyone on Zoom or anyone in the public that's here on this item?
It's, this isn't, the Assessment Appeals is not subject to the Brown Act.
All right.
So you're quasi-judicial board, and public opinion is only at the beginning.
Mr. Chair, you may just want to double check to see if anyone, depending on who was sworn in, would want to testify on this item.
Okay, and I know there's no one in the chambers, and is there anyone on Zoom that may have? All right, well, thank you for that. And so it looks like we'll go from there. Supervisor Sabatier?
I was just ready to make a motion. And County Council, could I do all A through G in my one motion, or do we have to do individual?
You can do A through G.
Okay. I move to withdraw the following assessment appeal applications. Number 012024 Lower Lake Holdings, 112024 Shaw Investments, 122024 Bellig, 142024 Lake Shore Drive, 162024 DeVita, 132024 Lisa Shannon, and 172024 Maldonado.
I second that.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
And as part of that motion, your board may want to consider adding and deny the appeal for each of those application numbers.
And deny the appeal.
All right. I still have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And it looks like we'll move on to our 8.2. Consideration of Stipulations for Following Assessment Appeals. A, Number 10-2024 NAU, and B, 18-2024 through 21-2024 Stryker. Dave.
And Mr. Chair, just as an overabundant caution, you may want to check also to see if there's any witnesses or anyone willing to testify.
Is there anyone here that is here to testify or discuss this, or? No one on Zoom? All right. Dave.
Okay, so we came to two of the assessment appeal to be reduced. The first was a lakefront property. This is 10-2024. And so by the property tax rules, one of the property tax rules in Rule 324 gives you a time period. So we can't go past 90 days past the lien date, which was January 1st, 2024, for this assessment appeal. And so we accepted their value with their comparable sales of $800,000 for the property. Then in June of this year, or last year, actually, the property two doors down sold for $1.15 million, which was larger and a little bit better. When we did the adjustments on their sales grid, said, well, yes, we're reducing it down to $800,000, but the next year it's coming back up to $950,000. So you get for on these properties, it's a, almost for right now, it's a perpetual Prop 8, meaning market value is going to go up and down. Your base-year value, what you purchase the property that goes up 2% is above. So they are keep climbing up. The second stipulation that we have was for Morgan Ranch Road LLC. The applicant has been trying to sell the property since 2002, which they originally listed the property for $1.5 million, consisting of four parcels. These have vines on them that have not been maintained and not been harvested. In the beginning of January of 2024, the property was reduced, the listing, to $1.1 million, which it currently is today for the sales price. This value is actually below the factor base-year value. So we stipulated on reducing the value to below the asking price for their taxable value for the 2024 year. Since the vines were not maintained and in poor condition, we just reduced the vine value till we reached a value of $1,050,000, and that's the stipulated value.
All right. Any questions? Any hands in Zoom, just in case someone came in at the last? All right, looking for action then.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the stipulations for the following assessment appeals. 102024 now, 182024 through 212024 Stryker.
Second.
And deny the appeal? No, okay.
For stipulations, there's no.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we will go back into the, well, the next item that we have is 7.1, it looks like, until we have our timed item, right? And we will be going back in as the Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Board of Supervisors. And until, we don't have a next item on the regular agenda for timed until 11:30, and then another at 1:00 PM. So who would like to start with their calendars?
I can.
All right. Supervisor Owen.
Okay. So last week, I, at the end of the week, I went to the California State Rodeo Finals for junior high, and I'd like to announce that we do have a state champion goat tire from, actually from Jessica's district. She lives on Cobb. And I forgot, it's Lexi, but I didn't look up her last name, so I'm so sorry. And she actually rides with us. My daughter's her coach. We also have, coming up this week, I have Middletown Luncheon Club tomorrow where I am going to be speaking, and that'll be at noon, and then I've got to rush up to the Blue Ribbon Committee meeting from 1:00 to 4:00 in Clear Lake. On Thursday, I have the Judges Breakfast at 7:00. After that, I'm meeting with our Lake County Visitor Center Chairman, which is Amanda Martin. Following that, I have a meeting at Middletown High School with Jeff Crane and Gina Weiss, which is the Middletown and Conocti Career Advisor, and a rodeo meeting, Middletown Rodeo Meeting at 6:00 PM at my place. On, Gina Weiss, yeah. Weis, I'm so sorry. Weis, correction. Yeah, she won't let that go. Okay, thank you. On Friday, I have a graduation for my grandson at 10:00 AM. We have a team roping jackpot at my place at Owen Ranch at 6:00 PM. It's going to be a long Memorial Day weekend, and I'd like to recognize our veterans with that. So Friday night at Owen Ranch, we have a jackpot. Saturday evening, we have a 40 open barrel race along with a Vegas Tuffus that starts at 6:00 PM. Time only is at 4:00. We have the Lower Lake Days Parade on Sunday, and an all-day rodeo at Owen Ranch along with the Vegas Tuffus on Sunday, starting in the morning. Veterans Day Memorial Service at the cemetery in Middletown. I'll be there speaking on Monday morning and finish up our rodeo for the weekend. And then I'll be back here at our special meeting on Tuesday.
That special meeting is next week?
July.
Oh, that's in July.
Oh, July. I am so sorry. I put that down wrong.
I was worried for a second. I was like, wait.
Yeah, no, I thought it was a special meeting for this week. I am so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Last week, I attended the Red Cross Lakeport Office.
Me too.
Grand opening. Supervisor Owen was there as well. I was out Scotts Creek Road investigating a complaint out there and actually took Luca Moretti with me out there because some of that road area is adjacent to the federal BLM land. Also attended Hold Fire Safe Firearms Storage, a presentation and meeting over at Frick Hall. It's being organized by our Behavioral Health in conjunction with the Veteran Affairs. Attended BIVAC meeting with Supervisor Piska last week. Also EM, Emergency Medical Care Committee and Inter-Facility Transport Meetings. I attended the Tribal Advisory to the Museum Board meeting. They were talking about updates on the Pomos Family Statue that is expected to be installed early next year. I had a meeting with Public Services up on Mount Conocti, looking at some of the infrastructure and the parklands up there. I had a tour of Esther Formula, which is a manufacturing facility that makes these supplements and vitamins out here near the airport, the old Workright Building. They're in operation for that, and they have a master, an application in for another major use permit for expansion. I attended Coal Creek Advisory Meeting with Supervisor Piska. Had a lunch event with the Lakeport Mayor and the Lakeport Police. I attended the Andy Weiss Memorial for a little bit down at Seppa Reef last Friday, and then went to the First Responder Memorial at Museum Park. On Saturday, attended the Class of 26 of Kelseyville High Breakfast Benefit. Went to a fundraiser for Dog Animal Nonprofit that was raising funding for spay and neuter programs. Attended the Small Farms Tours in Big Valley, and then the Historical Society Annual Picnic. Attended Lake County Children's Council Meeting, covered for Supervisor Sabatier last week. Met with the Register Our Voters, trying to learn more about that operation. And thank you, Vice Chair, for the invite. I attended the Bloody Island Remembrance or Forgiveness Ceremony.
Sunrise Forgiveness Ceremony.
Sunrise Forgiveness Ceremony, and that's the first time I had been. That was, I, you know, it was emotional and impressive ceremony, so thank you. Had Scotts Valley Community Advisory Meeting last night. I'm going to attend the Lakeport City Council tonight. I went to the last Animal Control Advisory Committee Meeting. I felt it was important that, you know, a supervisor attend that once in a while at least, and they haven't met for over a year, and they're just getting reorganized. And I've worked with County Council to get them some Brown Act training next month. So I would encourage another supervisor maybe once in a while to check that out. I think that would be helpful. Tomorrow, I'll be at the LAFCO meeting, and then the Blue Ribbon Committee Meeting down in Clear Lake. I plan to try to stop into the Planning Commission Meeting. There's a project in the city that they're hearing for some lake use items tomorrow. And then also have a Solid Waste Task Force Meeting Thursday. I guess Planning Commission's Thursday, too. And then I plan to stop by the Klaus Park. Last meeting over in Chair Crandall's District on Thursday. And I was also asked to be guest speaker at the Clear Lake Oaks Glen Haven Business Meeting that same evening on Thursday down in District 3. And then just numerous Memorial Day events that I'll be attending over the coming weekend. Thank you.
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow, I have LAFCO. I have an interview for Final Disaster Task Force Report, and that's the NACO Task Force that I'm on. And we are meeting with several of the Lake County partners to give an update on the work that we've been doing here. Our A Biomass Subcommittee Meeting. And Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, Best Fits Grants Meeting. Thursday, IBHS Meeting with Michael Newman, who I testified with, and Cal Fire. And then Middletown Ranteria UC Extension MOU signing, which is really exciting. So I'll be out at Ranteria all afternoon Friday. And then I have a pancake breakfast Sunday. I guess I'll stop there.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, starting with LAFCO tomorrow, I believe, yeah, that was probably canceled. A meeting with faith leaders from the city of Clear Lake to discuss some potential safe parking possibilities for our unsheltered folks, seeing if we can use some of that $1.5 million to create that so that we're looking all around the lake to provide that rather than just one location. I'm going to pop in at the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Green Water Services Presentation, see how that goes. Starting Thursday at Judges Breakfast, Lake County Solid Waste Task Force. I am going to have to cut out early. I'm having a conversation with Behavioral Health and RCS to again see if there is the possibility of expanding services at the North Lakeport Shelter, which might include safe parking. And then I will make sure to be at Austin Park at 12:00. And then I will make sure to be at Austin Park at twelve o'clock for the build graduation. And I'll stop there as well.
All right. So last week, I'm not sure if anyone's familiar, but there was a wildfire in the District Three area behind Robinson Rancheria. It was about four acres or so. And so it was, it was right in the middle of the Tippo Meeting and it took place. I thought it was prescribed. Terry had said, have you, she texted me and said, did you see, you know, watch duty? And I was like, yeah, I think it's prescribed, but it wasn't. So anyhow, it got put out really quickly. I think one of the most interesting things that I seen was, and when I went up with Chief Duncan, I seen some of the dry grass that it singed through, but then there was still green wet grass that it still traveled through. So just know that just because we recently had rains doesn't mean it won't go through that. And I know a lot of people know that. I'm just saying that also for other folks because I know these get started by people that are grinding or, you know, lawn mowing. A spark can catch something that's dry and then just catch that fuel and move forward. So really key to be cognizant of fire season and make sure you have everything around. Make sure you have water sources. Make sure you wet the grass if you're going to do something like that. Make sure you know if it's even allowed to be done at a specific time. So I wanted to highlight that. Then I want to say, I went to the Mendocino College Native American Motivational Day last Friday and spoke to some kids about higher education. And then following that, went to the Forgiveness Sunrise Ceremony. It usually starts on Friday. There's like a dinner in the evening. And so that, I went, went over there to volunteer and help. Wanted to get to the first responders, but I had too much going. We ended up moving and doing some, some, I had to go get some emergency water that wasn't in place there. So I was like, okay, because we, they do a fire. And so again, like I said, we got to have water, you know, water buffalo there or something like that. So got that all set up. It was a good event. I really enjoyed having the capability on Friday evening to speak to some folks who, there was a traditional dance simultaneously and as we were setting up. There were some folks that were there that said, I don't even really know what happened. So I was able to give like at least twenty five people sitting in the area where the dinner was hap, was going to happen within the next hour and a half and kind of just give like a quick history version of what, what took place and then answer questions about it. And a lot of them had no clue, even though they live in Lake County. So it was really helpful to just give that insight and talk about some things. And then just even the history and the tribe in general. And so it was really, you know, and I think that's the most important thing about events like this is giving, you know, education to folks from on the lands of the area, giving the actual names of the lands that we use and things like that. So that, I really felt good about that, you know. The morning, there was quite a, quite a bit of people there. Supervisor Sabatier and Vice Chair Asmussen were there and it was really cool. It was really good. Kind of windy, you know, so that was the other thing. That's why the water buffalo was there for the fire and whatnot. And wanted to make sure when, because they walk at like four o'clock, four thirty over from the dance grounds to where the old landmark is, right next to where the island would be. And so I immediately stayed back and put out the coals because I was like, it was really windy, like, and as you both know. So, so yeah, it just went well. They had a breakfast right following that over at the conference centers and that was that. But then I trucked right over to the catfish derby and was hanging out there with some folks. That was a really fun event to be at, seeing the kids pick up their fish. And then seeing some folks that didn't want to touch the fish. And I'm like, that little kid picked that fish up. He didn't have no problem with it, you know. I seen Luke there, Sheriff, and D A Cronus. And so, yeah, it was a really, really fun event to attend. I had some oysters, hung out, spoke with people, things like that. So was dog tired after that, so I went home. But so this next week, we have, I have North Shore Business, I think, is on Wednesday. I'll double check that. Usually it's the third Wednesday. Then I have the West Region Town Hall in the evening. Thursday is Clear Lake Oaks Glen Haven Business Association. I'm glad that you'll be there to speak. That's pretty cool. And yeah, I was with them. That's who held the actual catfish derby. So, yeah, and I, so I told them I'd be there with you. It was really cool also, just a side note, just seeing all the people despite the water being very windy and all the water being choppy, there was people out there, you know, on the side of the highway, on the side of the shorelines, fishing and whatnot. That was really cool to see. But so after Clova, I think Friday, what do I, I think we're there, let me see, I got the, is it the M O U signing? There's graduations too, though, so I'll be heading over to some graduations. And then also, I know they have one at Mendocino College Friday as well. We don't meet next week, so when, I'll just, I know there might be something Tuesday, but I'll double check. But I know for sure we have the, on the twenty eighth at Sopra Reese, we have the Potter Valley Project Town Hall. Thanks Chamber of Commerce for putting that on. So we'll be having that. And there's a dump day Saturday, May thirty first, at the Moose Lodge in Clear Lake Oaks. So if you're listening, please, you know, by all means, anyone in Clear Lake Oaks, please bring your garbage to the Moose Lodge so they can get that loaded up and we can get more garbage out of the hills of Clear Lake Oaks and out of the area. I know there's some spots, Spring Valley Double Eagle. And also, when you take that turn, I don't know the road. There's a little road. I got to memorize it. But people like to dump there when, when you go over towards Clear Lake, you know, where the, you might know it, I don't remember. But it's on your side, by the way.
Junction Road?
Yeah. I'd just like to point out it's on your side. It's a standing joke when I ride with people. They're like, hey, you got, I was like, that's Bruno's side. Off Highway twenty. So I'll leave it at that. And it looks like we're at ten thirty. Is there something else we should cover?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So matter just came to staff's attention this morning that may warrant your board's consideration of an extra item. And so the first step procedurally would be for your board to move to reopen Agenda Item Number Four, which is the consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda with, with public comment. And I could give you some general references, even for, for purposes of just, you know, the motion to reopen for your board's consideration. And so it is a closed session matter. And just for your board's own reference, the caption to be placed in close, for this extra item that's in closed session, that part is, of course, public information and that, the caption would be Public Employee Evaluation Title, Animal Care and Control Director.
Okay.
And so that, as I've stated, the matter just came up this morning that would warrant staff's request to your board to, to take this as an extra item, not appearing on the posted agenda since it came up after the posting of the agenda. But as I stated, first step for your board, for your board's consideration is to reopen Agenda Item Number Four and take public comment to that as well.
All right. So with that, is there anyone like to? Do we got to discuss it first?
Your board may and then take public comment just for this first step of just reopening Agenda Item Number Four.
I don't have a problem reopening.
No problems. All right. I'll open it up to the public in case. No hands in Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a so move to open up, reopen four point, yeah, four, Agenda Item Four. And so all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now at Agenda Item Four?
Yes.
Or point one, it would be considered, right?
Yes. So as I stated, this matter came up after the posting of the agenda literally this morning. And so for your, at least to my attention this morning, but it did arrive, staff did receive it prior, after the posting of the board's agenda. I stated the closed session, it is a closed session item that this extra item refers to. And as I've stated before, the caption for that would be Public Employee Evaluation Title, Animal Care and Control Director. And there is a need to, staff represents your board, that there is a need to take immediate action, which came to staff's attention after the agenda was posted. So again, public comment for this to them, the motion, the proposed motion for your board would be to approve taking the item up as an extra item as it came up after the posting of the agenda.
Okay. I make that motion?
Well, let's open it up to the public real quick if there's no other comments. Anybody from the public would like to comment on, oh, adding this to the agenda? None? So I'll bring it back to the board and you made a motion.
I did. I stated.
So I have a motion and a second to add four point one to the agenda for the reasons stated by County Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? And so we need to do that in closed session, right? And so the, shall we do a couple more in closed session as well? Like, should I read some of those off since we're going into closed session?
Your board may just make the announcement when it's time to take up the closed session items, I believe, at this point, unless your board is willing to get it, go into closed session now.
We don't have anything else on the agenda open until eleven thirty. Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's see. I know that there's, some of these are at specific times, so two thirty. And then would nine point two and nine point three be something we can cover as well? So I'll read off four point one, or I'll let you state four point one one more time and then I'll read off nine point two and nine point three.
So extra item under the agenda, four point one, which is also a closed session item that would be Public Employee Evaluation Title, Animal Care and Control Director.
All right. So with that, we have also nine point two, Conference with Labor Negotiator, A Negotiator, Carlos Torres. County Negotiators, Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, Casey Moreno, Pam Samick, and Diana Rico. And B Employee Organizations, L C D D A A, L C D S A, L C C O A, L C E A, L C S E A, and L C S M A. Nine point three, Employee Grievance Complaint Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. With that, we'll go in closed session and we will open back up in time for our six point, ah, I had it, six point six item at eleven thirty. So with that, we'll go in closed session.